Greetings. In the name of State of Maine, you are hereby requested to notify and warn the inhabitants of said town of Acton qualified to vote in town affairs to assemble at the Acton Elementary School on March 6th, 2019 at 7 o'clock in the evening to vote on the following articles. Article 1, to choose a moderator for said meeting. Floor is open for nominations for moderator.
Nominate your path.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations for moderator? Richard Nass has been nominated. Nominations have been closed. We have to vote on them still by secret ballots. We need a minimum of three voters. One. Anybody else want to vote for our moderator? Mr. Nass has been elected.
I, Richard Nass, do swear to support the Constitution of the United States and the laws of this state so long as I shall continue as citizen thereof. I, Richard Nass, do swear that I will faithfully discharge, to the best of my abilities, the duties incumbent upon me, as the Town of Acton Moderator for the special town meeting, according to the Constitution and laws of the State of Maine.
This is the return from possible Anderson rule settlement. The same goes for the settlements.
Good evening. Thank you all for coming. Great turnout. We will conduct this meeting as we normally do with the guidance of the Maine Moderator's manual unless there's objection. This is the point where if you object, you would say I object. There are no objections. We're going to run with the Maine Moderator's manual. The other part of this is if we have a need to hear from anybody who's not a resident of Acton, we need to give approval to do that. That is a two-thirds vote. The only person that I know that might be speaking tonight is our Tom Burke and Peru. It's here, everything else, and everybody else, I'm guessing, is going to speak tonight as a resident. And again, unless there's objection, we'll assume that we approve Jennifer speaking if it were to become necessary. We know. Article 2, see if the town will vote to change the position of two road commissioners from elected to appointed effective July 1st, 2019, for terms of up to three years each. Or to select and recommend approval of the articles written through to zero, more financing committee recommends ought not to pass, five to one. Is there a motion, Mr. Moderator? If we make a motion that we approve the articles written and to do it by secret ballot. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Mark. Okay. The motion is to approve the articles written and to do it by, I think, written ballot. By written ballot is we're going to designate the method of voting at this point. The method of voting requires a two-thirds vote, so we're going to separate this. So what we're going to do first is vote on the method of voting. So the method or the process for voting today involves these blue cards. Okay? And we're not going to debate the method of voting. We're just going to vote written, written ballot or not. So all those in favor of conducting this vote by written ballot, please raise your blue cards. Yes, now, those opposed. I think we're there, but let's count it. Let's count it again. I think we got a two-thirds vote. Let's count it just to make sure. Okay. So the issue here is to conduct this vote by written ballot. That means everybody gets a little piece of paper and you write yes or no on it once we figure out what the question is. Okay? We'll discuss that. So now it's about the method of voting. All those in favor of a written ballot, please raise your blue cards. Okay? Okay. All those not in favor of a written ballot, those who would vote by chose hands or by some other method, if you chose to, but again, all those in favor of written ballot, please So the count, so this is a two-thirds vote. So the count is the 74 yes, 25 no's that accomplishes the two-thirds. So we're going to do this when we get to voting. We're going to do this by written ballot. And again, what that means is everybody will have a piece of paper, put yes or no on it, and we'll collectively count it. Okay? Okay. So the question now before us is question two. To see if the town will vote to change the position of the two road commissioners from elected to appointed, effective July 1st, 2019, for a term of up to three years each. So now we're open for comment, questions, comments.
Yeah, over. I'm sorry. If they could pull their blue card on their lap, we'll go through and hand out ballots while you're taking comments.
Okay.
Just set it on your lap. I can see it, and we'll go.
Okay. So everybody needs to put their blue card on the ballot, and then clerk or one of the folks will give you a written ballot, a little piece of paper. That will be your ballot. Okay. Comments or questions?
Mary Stanton. I just want to say, when I became a school committee member, there was a person who wasn't fulfilling their duties, and in March, I was appointed as the member. I did not finish out her term. What I had to do is in June, be voted in to finish her, the next two years, her term. So I don't understand why some, by this position, we aren't voting for someone in June to finish out the person who left their term. So I just want to say, you know, that's kind of a sticking point, I think, with a lot of people is, you know, should have voted. There should be no three-year appointed to finish out a term. Anyway, also, you say, oh, maybe an appointed person will follow the rules. And what happens is, an appointed person, number one, becomes an employee. The employee gets all the benefits. The benefits are very expensive, but maybe the town doesn't mind paying for that. Employees are actually harder to fire than someone the next election cycle or the recall vote or however we can do it as the public. So I just want everyone to be thinking, that's all. And there's no slight on any of the selectmen. These are just facts. Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
Dennis, I would like to answer Mary's question. The appointment we're talking about is for a three-year term. It would be an election in June. The appointment that they already made was District 2 Road Commissioner resigned. The selectman appointed him, unlike Mary was saying, that was school committee. They appointed him for the remainder of the term, so he got appointed for a three-year term. They've already done that, the quarter-half. So what they're talking about now is, do we have an election in June for the next road commissioner for three years to replace District 1's road commissioner, or do we appoint for three years? I hope I answered that all right for you, Mary.
Other comments or questions on Article 2?
I just want to say for the record that our Maine State statute says that elected officials that resign, if they are selectmen or school committee, they have to hold an election. Elected officials such as road commissioners are appointed to finish up their term. So it wasn't something we did because we quoted, we were following the law.
If I may, yes, yes. There is no benefits to this. They're still a, they're an employee of the town, yes, but they're, when the trucks are hired, they're hired as a contractor. So the money they get paid is as a contractor, not, it's not a higher position. I mean, not a position to where there's any benefits to it.
Other questions or comments? David.
Dave, which of us is road commissioner? Do we raise our blue cards? I think what we're doing here is looking at, oh, sorry. I think, unfortunately, I don't think we're going to be solving any issues here at all by doing a vote yet tonight, other than creating other ones. So get closer, David. Get closer a little higher.
Start talking here.
Go, go. Get close and go. The unfortunate part about this whole deal is, we've got a real mess here. This vote here, I don't believe is going to solve anything other than maybe servicing the selectmen and giving them some more control that, unfortunately, at the end of the day, I believe we walked into something they shouldn't have. Now, as an elected official, when I got elected, and it wasn't a popularity contest, I had, when I got elected, when Scott got elected, when Bernie got elected, my father, everybody that's done this job in the last, I would say, 20 years that I've worked, the Kings of the World, these people were qualified to do these jobs, and they did these jobs. I get offended whenever I see popularity contest, because it makes it, oh, that I didn't do my job. I did my job. But the problem is here is, the reason why I resigned from my job was, it wasn't because I couldn't do my job. I was doing my job. It may not have been up to the selectmen's liking, but things were being done, things were lined up to be done. All the things that I had lined up to be done did not get done. Unfortunately, I resigned from a job that I took to heart. I loved my job. The money wasn't great. Don't matter what you see in those books, there's a law that I put into this job to make this job what it was. I would bet on the back was to make sure I did my job. But the reason why I did that is because I knew every three years, I had to come to you people and put sides out and, you know, do this and do that, and I knew I had to get the approval of the Town of Acton to get my job back. Now, over the years that I did my job, you look at the cost of what it cost the town to do my job and to do Scott's job, whatever, and I wish it was here, you know, but, but at the end of the day, you know, yes, there was issues with the job. You know, some people believed that I may have had too much power or whatever, but at the end of the day, there was a plan. There always was. If somebody called me and I know last, the last bits of it, oh, I don't know what roads I worked on, it means I did tell what roads I want work on. But the problem is, now and then, I would have to change the road that I worked on because of budgetary reasons. Okay? I wanted the hopper road done in a bad way. That road sucks. And, but, the unfortunate problem is, as a road commissioner, as a department head, I was not allowed to do my job with the budget. When you're told every year that you have a flat line or a budget or a 3% raise, and last year we got, we got a 10% increase on our pay. You know what 10% increase of $90,000 is? It's $9,000. That's not a lot of money. Okay? But over the years, I was never allowed to put in a line item or even do a budget carry. Didn't have, we talk about line item budgets and this and that. We were not allowed to budget. We were told, flat line budget, flat line budget. You can't run a show like that. Now, all of a sudden, I hear at selectmen's meetings, oh, the snowplow budget's going on, so we're going to have to start thinking about adjusting those numbers. Point, newsflash, nine years of doing this, and we never got to be able to do that. So the problem is, it's not the elected position. The elected position makes me accountable or the person who's elected, okay, not me or obviously, but whoever's elected, accountable to everybody in this room, not the three people sitting up from the podium and not to a committee or whatever, it's to the whole Town of Acton. And the unfortunate part here is, is, you know, this is smoke and mirrors. Okay? Oh, we're going to appoint somebody, and we're going to appoint another guy. Okay? And then what happens is it snowballs. This appointing guy wanted what we had stolen. It's gone hot. We wanted a $15,000 stipend for doing administrative work, doing this, doing that, and that wasn't even allowed to be put forward to the Town of Acton. Okay? The department heads, elected or not, should be able to put in their budget and do their job. But when you allow three people who are politically motivated, because we all are...
Can we talk to the moderator? He's supposed to talk to the moderator?
Yeah, David. Okay. Let's talk a little bit about this.
We'll talk some of this.
We're going to stick to, we're going to stick to the article.
I hate to talk to the taxor.
Listen, and also, talk about what is, that happened or not.
That's what I'm getting to. I'm getting to the climax to this whole deal.
Okay.
And so, the problem with this whole deal is, it wasn't the elected position in the first place that was the issue. The issue was, who had the authority to do what over a period of time? And my reason for my resigning was, I had three select board people telling me how to do my job, and then I also had a committee behind that pushing the agendas. My job was being taken away. Now, I just watched a selectmen's meeting last night. That proves my fault. We had a committee last night to go up and say, we called engineers. We have this guy coming down, we've had C F cracking guy come down, we've got prices for this. They haven't even notified the road commissioner. This is the problem we have here, guys, is we have, we need a description of our road commissioner and what his duties are, to ente what his authorities are, and what he's allowed to do and what he's not allowed to do. We also need, because of the whole, this whole thing has been created by this, is we need a description of what the road committee's job, that's what we should be doing tonight is vote on something like that, not changing the wheel, okay? Because a group of people have come in with what I call the mob, okay, has come in and said, this is what we want, we're going to get it, we're going to come to every selectmen's meeting, and those are the only ones that come to those meetings, not nearly, but the majority. At the end of the day, they've pushed this agenda, they're taking away the road commissioner's job and authority. We've always done our job. We've never made everybody happy. At the end of the day, your roads went plowed, this happened, that happened. We very rarely got phone calls saying, oh, you know, this, this, and whatever. But at the end of the day, the issue we're having here is, nobody knows what the authority of the road commissioner is, because there's no policy. Now, I asked that back during an executive session meeting back months ago, because I was getting hung up to talk. Do I have a three-minute limit?
I don't. I'm just sorry.
You do, you do. We had an executive session meeting.
David, hang on just a minute.
We can't have two people talk, okay? So just wait a minute.
This is really, now, David, well, everybody in this building, listen to me. Wrap this up. I think people are going to be interested in whether you're in favor of this or against it.
I think most people are.
You're circling around, and people don't know where you are. So tell us.
I am going to tell you right now that, right now, that, at the end of the day, appoint a road commissioner is a bad idea. Okay? This evolves down the road to a full-time position or pay position before you know it, we're a full-time municipality, we cannot afford that. And honestly, at the end of the day, whoever's elected, whether or not it's a popularity contest or not, that person's responsible for doing that job. And by doing this, who's responsible now? Is it the guy that they appointed? Is it the three selectmen? Is it the road committee? Who's it appointed? We don't need to recreate the wheel. We stay elected, let the elected guy do his job, let him pass in his budgets, let him do his job, and then we stop worrying about the policies down the road of what these committees, what their jobs are and what the road commissioner's job is. That's what we need to be looking at right now, not changing the wheel here.
Perfect. Okay. We know where you stand.
I guess I don't want to get into what he said, she said, but some of the things he said were not true. I don't want to get into that.
Full, that's full. You were in the right place. David, David, David.
And so, one of the things we can't do with, and I don't, I don't like the world control, because I don't want to control, I don't think this board wants to control the road commissioners, we want it to work together. And asking previous road commissioners to work together, they had a hard time with that. They didn't want to sit in a room and make the budget.
We're off topic.
So we're off topic. An appointed road commissioner would allow us to hold them to the personnel policy, so we could, in fact, you know, Mary mentioned not firing them, but there's disciplinary action that we could follow in the personnel policy if anything were to go awry.
Additional comments or questions? Again, we can go around several. Scott, you're next.
Yes, Scott Stedden. We may well have a problem with our system the way it is now, but I don't think we're coming up with a very good solution. It seems like we've kind of created a crisis, and then we are forcing a proposed solution, which doesn't seem like it's really going to be any better than what we have now. I think that we need to, probably, I'm going to agree with David on the point, that we need to define more of what the road commissioner is responsible for and how he is accountable. And I think that's things that we can do as a town somehow. But I don't see that just appointing someone as opposed to voting for them is going to solve that issue.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Comments or questions?
I don't think you people...
No, 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 no. That was really the you people stuff. We want to hear your opinion.
I don't think they can handle a person. We've had problems before with somebody, and they never make notes and put it such a place, a person that created a problem.
We're interested in your opinion about this.
Yeah, that's where I'm getting, how can they run a guy and keep him in control to make sure he's at the meetings all the time, to make sure that he's doing his job right? If they find him doing something wrong, they're going to say something to him, and they're not going to write it down, it should be in somebody's record if they have to talk to somebody. And I show these people this in a book, a supervisor's book, and they still won't go with it. So the next person that comes up and replaces them knows nothing about this person that did something wrong.
Okay. Thank you. Other comments or questions? I'm going to read the article again to help us stay focused. All right? Article 2, is he the town will vote to change the position of the two road commissioners from elected to appointed, effective July 1st, 2019, for a term of up to three years each? That is the motion in front of us.
If we're going to make a change, why don't we make a whole change? We don't need two road commissioners. One man can handle the whole town.
Okay, that's not in front of us. We've had a couple of public hearings on versions of this thing. Voting on exactly what I just read tonight. Okay? Other comments or questions? All right. Roll it.
Roll of our house, more than finance and citizen. Basically, it doesn't matter one way or another which way the town votes. Elected or appointed, the problem boils down to communication. If people don't have good communication, then things are going to go awry. That being said, call the question.
Okay. The motion is to vote immediately without additional questions or comments, something we can vote on, will vote on, without further debate. All those in favor of ending debate and voting right now, please raise your blue cards. Yes, now, those opposed. Okay. That's, we're clearly desirous of voting. So I'm going to read the motion again. Everybody who's got a blue card should also have a ballot. It looks like this. I'm going to read the question. If you're in favor of the question, you can check yes. If you're opposed, check no. We will collect them. These are people will come to the front, put your ballot in the box, and we will count them. Got to have your blue card when you come up forward, or we're not going to take your ballot. Okay? Okay, here's the question. To see if the town will vote to change the position of the two road commissioners from elected to appointed, effective July 1st, 2019, for a term of up to three years each. You're in favor of that motion, check yes. Bring your blue card up front. If you're opposed, check no. Bring your blue card and the ballot up front, put it in the box.
Albert wants the vessels back. Does everybody vote that wants to vote? Last call on voting.
Okay, the results are, yes, thirty-four, no, seventy, so the article does not pass. I'll accept the motion to adjourn. Seconded, who was seconded by David? To adjourn. Thank you all for coming, appreciate it, great turnout.